I'd like to call the January sixteenth through two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectments meeting to order at six thirty. We do have a need to go into non-public session under RSA A three colon two A, C, and E. And the next item on the agenda are the public minutes of January second. Does anybody on the board have any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I have one, Madam Chair, on page seventeen.
Okay.
Second paragraph.
This is Ann.
Where it says he missed the hazard litigation, it should be mitigation.
Ah, yes. Okay. Anybody else have any corrections or changing, changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's Moose Mountain Regional Greenway to hold a snowshoe race on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, from seven a.m. to twelve noon at Abenaki Ski Area. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that? Come on up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kari Lighren. I am the Education Coordinator for Moose Mountains Regional Greenways. We will be holding, hopefully, if it's passed, a snowshoe race at Abenaki. The race starts at nine o'clock, and it, there's, you should have a map of the course in your booklet. And we have volunteers, and we have some, have a great race. We're also gonna be having a, it's a kid's snowshoe shuffle. It's like an obstacle course for the kids while the parents and everyone else are running. If you have never seen a snowshoe race, I definitely encourage you to come see it. It's wild.
[laughing].
So, do you have any questions at all?
I'll pass.
I will, let me first ask if there's anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this event. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions?
I would just make one comment about the certificate of insurance to be updated. The one we have here says twelve-one seventeen to twelve-one eighteen.
They gave us two in the packet. I did the same thing, and there's one further back.
One on the back.
I did the same thing.
Yes. When I, when I talked with Ann about it, I sent, we were in the midst of recycling our, our insurance, or upgrading our insurance for the next year, so I wanted to make sure that, that she had, knew that we had had one before, and we were just going to be continuing the insurance. But you should have the updated, yes.
It's there. It's just back further in the packet.
Okay.
So, does any, but, any other comments? Hearing none. Board, can I have a motion?
So moved. Pass the proposal.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. You have your permit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. Does anybody have anything they'd like to remove?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove item B, donation of a gift to Town of Wolfboro for Park Bench Libbie Museum, and kinda, and do that as a separate item.
Okay. So, you're making that motion, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Anybody have any issue? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Post. So, we have one other item on the bulk vote, and that's a weekly manifest for January fourth and eleventh. Can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote A?
Move to approve bulk vote A, January eleventh, twenty oh nine manifest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Brad, do you wanna lead this, and?
I'm sure. We have a, Alana's here in the audience, if she'd like to come up and talk to, briefly about this. We have a donation, a private resident of Park Bench to be placed up at the Libbie Museum, and I'll kinda turn this over to Alana for.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. And we're very pleased that we've had several donations to the Libbie of late, and this one in particular is of particularly useful for the public. It's from the Chisholm Martell family, Amy Chisholm Martell, and she would like to donate to the Libbie Museum a granite bench to be situated across from the museum on the large green vista. It's a sixty-inch granite park bench. We don't have any similar items, and it's to be given in memory of her mother, Marion Chisholm. She was a long-term summer resident, had a home just along the Narrows past the Libbie Museum, and loved Winter Harbor very much. And I've been in touch with Amy. We've discussed various sightings and various bench styles, and I'd like to recommend this to the selector.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any question, questions? Okay. Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept this gift?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the, the gift per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B of a gift of a park bench to the Libbie Museum area up there, from the Amy Chisholm Martell, in memory of her mother.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. We've accepted it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business. It's appointment of Mike Turner to the Sinobacteria Ad hoc Committee. Mike, are you here? Come on up.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine. And I want to thank you for being willing to volunteer. I understand you're willing to do some water testing, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, that's, my, my son's a hydrogeologist, and I have a scientific background, and I live on Winter Harbor. Been here, you know, longtime visitor and longtime resident, so I was only a full-time for the last four years, but I wanna get involved, and so this is right up my alley.
Beautiful. Well, thank you. Members of the board, does anybody have any questions for him? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to accept Mike Turner's application to join the Sinobacteria Ad hoc Committee.
Second.
Okay.
May, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Alrighty. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, we have a request from the American Legion Post eighteen, Harold Chamberlain, to talk about the one-hundredth celebration of the Independence Day Parade.
I've got, I've got one to sign. Don't worry about it. I got the original. And I'm very happy to see I educated. It's the Independence Day Parade.
Yes, I read it right here.
I'm very proud of you, yes. This is the time of year people contact us, they wanna know what the theme is for the upcoming year. Don't usually do the permits till around March or whatever, but the theme, I haven't got the wording out yet. It is gonna be based on, this parade was made by the American Legion at the end of World War I, so the parade is also one hundred years old this year. It is our centennial for the American Legion, and the parade in Post eighteen. So, the theme this year is gonna be based around the, the idea, I haven't got the wording yet, the American Legion, Herrmann Hill Post eighteen, one hundred years, still serving the community, state, and nation. So, if you wanna make floats around that idea. We would like something real spectacular this year. We're a, obviously, a non-funded operation, and, you know, we're a very small group, but our heart's in the right place, and we, we would really like to see people turn out this year. We've had some suggestions tonight already, that maybe we have, people have too many vehicles. What they don't know is, is our vehicles are not that many, but when you get fifty-foot rigs, they, they tend to lengthen things out, so that is something I want to talk to later on with the, with the police chief, fire chief, and we can get together on that. Last year, I can honestly say that parade actually was bigger than the area on which it was supposed to be placed. We had floats, solid floats, all the way to Cary Beach.
Oh, wow.
It made it handy for parking. But it, it was really, really amazing. Our friends on Molly, the trolley, wound up in the exact wrong place, so I had to give a personal escort all the way up through, and some John Deere tractors. I had to direct them on to some pieces of land under construction, various property owners, and luckily, ruffled fellas got unruffled when they saw what I was dealing with. It's fine. It's, it's quite a job. This'll be my fiftieth year as a member in the American Legion, also my twenty-fifth year running the parade, so I really want it to go good. So, I got some friends here from the Post, and they would like to bring up something. It won't, won't take very long. They, they wanted to bring up, so I'm gonna leave the floor to them gentlemen. Frank?
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep.
Just state your name so the secretary can write it down. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm Frank Cartier, C-A-R-T-I-E-R. I'm the adjutant of Post eighteen. I'd like to thank Harold for his fifty years, or I wouldn't think of it, acknowledge Harold for his fifty years in the American Legion, serving our, our community and our veterans in the community. This is the one-hundred-year anniversary of, of the American Legion as a national organization. It is also the one-hundred-year anniversary of Post eighteen, which was one of the original posts that was chartered in nineteen nineteen. That being said, we have several things that are planned. We have the parade, obviously, that we do every year. The, the Legion Hall is, is not in the, in the shape that, that it can continue in, in its current condition for the next one hundred years. So, what we're gonna be doing in this year is we're gonna be doing a fundraising effort to, to renovate the hall. There's been a lot of great things that have been done in Wolfboro over the last few years. I've been a Wolfboro resident for about five years. I was a, lived in Brookfield for five years prior to that, so I've been around the area for ten years. You know, we have things such as the Great Hall here, you know, the, our town offices. We've done great things with privately, you know, the Pickering Corner House. Other institutions and buildings around town have, have seen a lot of revitalization, and a building that really does need revitalization is, is our post home on Center Street. It's not the original location of the American Legion Post, that was actually downtown, where the, the Grand Army of the Republic, the Civil War veterans, had their post, and, and we took over about the time Harold joined. And, that was a joke, by the way. But, anyway, so what we're gonna be doing is, is raising funds to restore our building. There's been a lot of history in our building, both for the veterans and also for the community, renting it out for, for different events. People have fond memories of that, and we'd like to have that as, as available again for our community, and working with, like, the fire chief, I've discussed with him, possibility of us being like a overwhelming shelter, and in case of, of any minor emergencies that have come up. So, anyways, thanks for letting us speak. Post eighteen is very proud. We're a smaller organization than we've been in the past. We'd like to open up any veteran that's, that's eligible. We'd like to welcome them to join our post, bring in some new energy, to continue the energy that gentlemen such as Harold has, have provided, and, and move forward in continuing to serve our veterans and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Josiah Brown Scholarship Awards, and I'm gonna pass this over to the acting town manager.
Madam Chairperson, we are in receipt of two requests or applications for the scholarship fund. We believe that these are worthy recipients and feel that we should award this. There is a history with this particular scholarship, and in doing some review, it appears that we don't do a great job, and we'll have to work on that, of publicizing this with the school district, to get more candidates for this application. As well, we may wanna revisit the thresholds of the scholarship, which have been identified in the past, but I, I think we gotta take it a little more aggressively and make some decisions.
So, we have two, Maria Hendrickson and Christina Jacobs, and we're looking at a thousand five hundred dollars, and I thought, Mr. Bauer, you had something you might wanna say?
I'd like to propose to, the motion to double that to two, three thousand dollars, seeing that we have a lot of money in the account that's not been called for, and also three thousand dollars isn't gonna take care of anyone's college education, so I would move, I would make a motion that we increase the amount to three thousand dollars to these two recipients.
Do I have a second to that? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. The other thing I will say is, just for the public, we usually have about six. We had two, and that's why we need to go back and look at the threshold and how we're advertising it. So, acting town manager, let's see if we can get that on the end of February, beginning of March agenda. Give us some time to kinda talk about that. Alrighty. We've awarded. Um, next, okay. Next item on the agenda is the Town of Wolfboro Water and Sewer Rate Review two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Ford?
Hello. Tonight we have Underwood Engineers here, we're gonna be making a presentation, so if you guys wanna get the computer going, and we have some updates. There was a handout in your package, but it was based on assumptions that have changed, that most being the water hydrant fee that the budget committee cut from the twenty percent as requested, back to the level they had last year, which is three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So, the changes directly relate to that, and Keith Pratt will be making the presentation. And we are a little bit late on this, so one of the things, tonight we would like to do, a, a rate increase, and then make it effective, though, for April first. So, it would be for the March readings, April first, so, you know, we have some time to get out, people realize where we're going. So, that's for you to vote on at the, at the end of the presentation, so we can see where we're at, 'cause things have changed since last year. We, last year, we had approved a two percent for water, and we were proposing a two percent in two thousand and nineteen with a two-and-a-half percent for sewer. That was what we had proposed last year. Things have changed a little bit, and I'll let Keith take over with the presentation.
Thank you, David. Again, Keith Pratt, Underwood Engineers, I'm the president of the company, and have been involved with helping you, the town, with rates for quite a bit now, and Megan just passed out, who's with me also, Megan McCowen, has been helping with the rate work with your department as well. Passed out the PowerPoint, so you can follow along there, or follow along on the screen. And what I was gonna start with was a review of what we talked about in two thousand and seventeen. So, we came before you after we finished the rate model in two thousand and seventeen and did a presentation with the recommendations that Dave just summarized. I'm gonna give you the highlights of those, kinda keep it at a simple, high level, and then hi, show you where things did change a little bit, and then talk about what we're suggesting for adjustments. So, back in two thousand and seventeen, when you commissioned the rate model, you, we wanted to look at a five-year projection going forward on both your expenses and your revenues, and provide rate adjustments accordingly. And there was a lot of discussion at the time on how various impacts to the rates might change from reductions, changes from general fund contributions, mostly on the water side, relating to the hydrant fees. And then to look at how rate changes would impact long-term capital revenue needs to support your asset management plan. You've been involved with asset management plan, planning for a while now. In fact, you have another one of those discussions on the agenda tonight. So, those were the goals from two thousand and seventeen. At that time, your rates were twenty dollars as a unit charge per month, and for water, ten fifty-two, and sewer, sixteen fifteen for a thousand gallons. And as Dave noted, back then, you adjusted the water rate for two thousand and eighteen by two percent, so they went up a little bit. No adjustment at the sewer was made, but those were, that was generally the recommendation at the time. This is the system information, just as a point of info, twenty-two hundred-plus accounts on the water, and about nine hundred-plus accounts on the sewer. A lot of seasonal units as well, which is noted on the bottom. The assumptions that we made in the budget, which seemed to be holding fairly true, we did a, a little bit of an up, update or check, were about two percent increases per year for both the water and sewer. So, that was what the five-year projection was, when we looked at increasing the expenses as a look ahead, and the legal contract ops, debt service, were adjusted per the budget needs. Those things are sort of established, they weren't held to the two percent, they were held to more about what you actually needed there, by contract or by debt service schedules. There was, there's a significant contribution from the general fund, or a, an important contribution from the general fund for both the water and sewer department, and these were, these are what were identified at the time. Two, at that time, we had the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen actuals, and then we projected forward for eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And the sewer department held true to that, or has been holding true to that so far, and I think projected is to stay true to that. The general fund was, at the time, we were recommending a twenty percent contribution from the general fund for the water, but that was adjusted slightly downward, and, and in two thousand and eighteen, instead of it being about three hundred and sixty-four thousand, I think it, it was budgeted at three twenty-four. So, there was a, and that was, is now being proposed forward as we understand it. So, that was a reduction in revenue to the department. So, back in two thousand and seventeen, these were the recommendations for the water, and as Dave noted, we were proposing the two percent increase per year, but that was also based on certain general fund contributions. What in fact was done, was the two percent rate increase was done, but we actually had less general fund contributions, by about forty thousand. So, at that time, this is a, a repeat, but two percent was proposed for the water, and, and the goal that, at that time, was to, to, to cover the operating expense increases with the rate increase, but as debt was falling off, because in the water department, there was a significant amount of debt falling off, or an important amount of debt falling off, but as a result of the needs for the asset management plan, we were proposing to offset those, those, as the debt falls off, we were gonna take those excess revenues and put them towards your asset management plan. And some of you may remember this chart, or versions of this chart, I think this was the exact chart we showed in two thousand and seventeen. It's a ten-year projection, so on the x-axis, it actually shows how our revenues work in ten, over ten years, or our surpluses work over ten years. The top line is your expenses as we projected them. The bottom, the green and the orange lines were the, the, I'm sorry, I had it backwards. The top line's the revenues as we projected it, and then the, the green and the orange were the expenses. And the delta was the surplus that you would start seeing year after year after year as a result of the debt falling off. And over ten years, we projected that to be about four to five million, almost five million dollars. And the intent was to, to use those funds to support your asset management plan. So, that was the goal. That was what the board bought into a couple of years ago, and as they were establishing the rates. On the sewer, it was, it was similar. We didn't have some of the asset management work completed at that time, but there was a rate increase recommended at two-and-a-half percent, not in two thousand and eighteen, but two thousand and nineteen, as Dave noted, and then every year thereafter, and to update that, or to track that, once additional asset management plan work was completed. So, what we did, and what we were asked to do by the department, is say, okay, here we are, January of two thousand and nineteen, how do the projections and the estimates that we made two years ago hold true to, to those recommendations? I think, I believe you, you have a copy, or you have access to a copy of the seventeen rate model, two thousand and seventeen rate model, and a memo that we provided maybe in early January this year. And I'll tell you that some of the, the memo in, early January looked just at the consumption, and over the last week, we collected some more information on miscellaneous revenues and some of the impacts to the general fund changes. The memo shows that our revenues from consumption are tracking a little bit closer, a little bit less, but what we're adding to the discussion now in this presentation is, is how the general fund reductions and how the miscellaneous costs are impacting the rates as well. So, in summary, the goal was to see, see if those recommendations were still appropriate. What we're finding with the water revenue, as noted in that January memo, is that the, the revenues from your consumption is a little bit less than your, we projected in the, the two thousand and seventeen report, not by a lot, but by a little, about two, two-point-six percent, so that had a small impact. The general fund contribution, however, decreased, as we just noted, by about forty thousand, due to the adjustment in the, the hydrant charge contribution from the town. And the miscellaneous revenues, which is your connection fees, your interest charges, and other, other interest receipts, or, and other things like that, did, did increase a little bit, I think mostly from the robust building permits and the new connections you're getting. So, we, so we saw a little bit of, of an increase there. And your expenditures, we're noticing, have been tracking fairly closely. They're a little bit, little bit less than our, our model, but fairly close to what you've actually been spending. But what we're noting, when you sort of add all those up, the net revenue loss over the four years in the model is about a hundred and sixty thousand, which is about the forty thousand dollars a year in the water department. Yeah?
Projected forward?
What's that? Projected forward. Yep. That's, that's, so the net revenue loss over the next four years is therefore approximately a hundred and sixty thousand, which is essentially the forty thousand per year. So, what we're recommending, based on just some quick adjustments in the model when we ran this, is that instead of the two percent rate increase that we projected back in two thousand and seventeen, which you implied, implemented in eighteen, to get back on track with the goals from two thousand and seventeen, it needs to be a three percent rate increase to make up the difference. And that would allow you to continue to fund the asset management plans as we originally planned to do. So, all, all that summarizes is to, the recommendations adjusted from a two percent to a three percent increase for the next four years. And on the sewer, the, the revenues were down a little bit, as we note here in two thousand and eighteen. General fund contributions remained the same. Miscellaneous revenues did increase a little bit as well, and the expenditures have been tracking closely, so we're not recommending any change in the sewer rates at this point than what we recommended before. We're recommending a two-and-a-half percent adjustment, but that's consistent with what we had said in two thousand and seventeen. So, there's no change in that recommendation. And so, these would be the proposed rates, if the board were to see these two increases for two thousand and nineteen. A three percent increase in the water rate would change the monthly unit charge to twenty-one oh one, and the consumption charge to eleven oh five, and the sewer, at two-and-a-half percent increase, would change it to twenty fifty monthly charge, and sixteen fifty-five for the consumption. And those are the recommended rate adjustments every, for the next four years. One of the things I think the town's been good about, and the department's been good about, is you look at this just about every year or two, so that, you know, even though we're doing a four- or five-year look ahead, you take a one-year snapshot and say, is it still tracking right? So, you know, going forward with these rates, and the thought that it would have to continue for the next three or four years, will be confirmed every, every year as we go forward. So, that's what we had as a summary of where we're at, and certainly open to any questions and answers. I think I captured everything, Dave?
Any board members? Paul?
I'm sure, I missed it. Capital project looking forward, dollars per year, for the next four years.
Yeah, I think you will.
Trending above average, trending below average?
I can, I'll, I'll point to you where it is in the rate model. I think it's on table ten, which is in the Excel spreadsheet, which you can study, and I think, Dave, you may have to ask.
Yeah.
Answer whether it's tracking above or below.
What the plan was, is to hold off any major projects for ten years, to build up the cash. So, we're gonna do smaller projects, like we did last year. That did come out of the cash reserves, so we are, we have reduced our cash reserves to, down to about a million dollars. In these rates, we have a hundred and twelve thousand built into our capital outlay, so we are going to, we, right now, the plant is in pretty good shape, you know, it just had its twenty-year anniversary, but there are things that have to be done, so our feeling is we can kinda go slow with those smaller ones, build up the reserves, so when it comes time for the next major waterline project, which could be the Main Street, in ten years, we could do that with cash. If something comes up sooner, we would then consider, you know, maybe smaller projects at the treatment plant, or maybe other issues come up. So, right now, we have, the asset management has identified projects within the ten-year period. My recommendation was to kinda push those off, so we could build this up, so we didn't continue to have to borrow. That's, so that's where we're at. We have, it's more detailed than the water asset management plan, but it explains the, we have a hundred million dollars of cost over the next hundred years, but we don't have to do it all in the first ten. So, the intent was to kinda push it off a little bit, and then also to combine it with other projects, like the road projects or other sewer projects, so that we kinda have the scale of economy.
Anybody else have any questions?
I got a bunch more, but I won't ask.
You know, I, I have a concern of going up as much as three percent. You know, we've generally tried to keep it around two and do it every year. That's a pretty big increase, I think. Partway through a lot of nonprofits' budget years. I don't know how the other board members feel about. I don't know how the other board members feel about that. So based on that 3% rate, how much do you expect us to save towards our asset management plan in 2019?
It'd be approximately $40,000. I think we'll be looking at that additional 1% to be about $40,000 for '19.
So by going, if we went to 2%, we would just break even. By 3%, we're, we're collecting 40,000?
No, the difference would be, so at 2%, we will still have a surplus. We would be able to put some money in. So this year, we're going to, our surplus is about 5,000 to 10,000. I'm just running the numbers, so we're very close. Next year, at the 2%, our surplus might, would be something, but it'd be 40,000 less than the projection. We're looking to get, to get to 5 million in 10 years. We would be 100, if we kept at 2%, we would be the 160,000 short.
Okay. So, but I thought part of the way we were going to get to that million dollar was a reduction in our debt service.
Correct.
And what do you expect in 2019 of that reduction? Is there coming anything into, because principal and interests are coming down as that we go out?
Right, but that's in our budget book. I would say that when you look at those, there are probably 20,000 in the water and then maybe something a little less in distribution. So we have about a certain amount, it's, it's in there, but, you know, so there is a reduction.
So we're going to, we're going to have 40,000 from our rates and another 20 from the decrease in debt service. So we're really collecting 60,000 in 2019?
Most of the, most of the, most of the gain, you're not, there's, let's see, there's 2019.
Can you put up that chart 10 so we can look at it?
No, we don't have that in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard for us to kind of-
Your point being is, again, this is not a race, it's a long, it's a marathon. So if we waited another year at 2%, that would be, you just, again, it's the long-term aspect. We're trying to build up that, that-
I get that. I just, I'm just trying to figure out-
Let me, I, yeah, I can help a little bit here.
Because there are two ways that we were going to gain that from, and that's the other piece I was asking about.
Yep. So Megan, just, so we've done, we've ran the rate model at 2% and at 3%. And at 3%, with the assumptions that have been adjusted, we're running, we're, we're suggesting there'll be a surplus. I think Dave suggested it was in the teens, but it's about 20, $25,000. So if you go down to 2%, we actually would project that you might actually run a loss at 2% instead of 3%. Not by much, but a little bit. And so the point in the gain, in the, in the revenue to, towards your asset management is really not going to be realized until two or three years out. Your debt service isn't falling off, I think, until a couple of years, we're really going to start seeing a lot of it.
Once we have the numbers for the next three years.
Yeah, so our projections in this rate, in this rate model at a 3% rate increase in 2019, we see about a $25,000 surplus in '19 if you implement 3%. Next year, if you implement another 3%, you would see about an $85,000 gain. Year after that, in 2021, if you implemented another 3%, you would see just about a $200,000 gain. So now you're starting to see the big number gains.
I think it would be very helpful. I know I would like it. I think it's, it would be nice if the board could see that or get a copy of that as we think about our rates. I know you're asking for it tonight, but-
No, no, no.
You know, as I'm starting to try to figure it out, and I bring my 2017 rates and some of this, trying to figure out where we're heading, because they are different now.
We can give you the 3% calculation. You actually have this table in the rate models, Table 14. And so what we've done is because, all we did was adjust the loss of the general fund revenue to capture the same gains. So you'll see those gains in Table 14 in the rate model. All we've done here is say, okay, we lost 40,000 in the general fund. What's the rate difference? And so the 3% gets us pretty close to back to what we had projected in '17. But we'll provide this to you, Dave, so we can-
I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and, and first of all, it's, for those people who are watching this on TV, this is a lot of hard work, and you guys have done an incredible amount of work, so no hits on that side. I think what's important is folks really want to understand on one page what we're trying to accomplish here because prices are going up. And I, I believe, and I, and thank you for telling me, you know, go find it on Page Chart 10 or go over here. I don't think we want the public to have to do that. So it would be helpful if we could, if we could kind of get a sense of what's been the revenue flows over the past five years and the projections going forward. That would be like a little box on a chart. What's the expense flows that have occurred in the past few years and where we project going forward? And, you know, you'll swear that you're doing a great job keeping expenses under control, which you do. What's the capital expenditures that we think we have to make in the next several years without getting into the gory details of all this stuff, but what are they? And when you take revenues minus expenses and you have surplus, how do those fund those capital expenses? And if it's going to come up as a deficit, then we have to raise prices. If it's going to come up as a surplus, then we may not have to raise prices by 20%. We may, I, I, I think it would be helpful, at least for, you know, for me, and I think for other people, if we could kind of do a big animal picture visual that helps people understand revenues, expenses, and costs, capital costs, projects in the future, and what that implies in terms of prices. For water and, and for sewer. And I think this, this backup here, and I, I don't mean to be gratuitous, this is pretty awesome stuff. It's thoughtful, it's very well done. But, but I think, I'm a new select person, so I, I'm kind of wandering around here, and that's, I was hurting trying to figure out how to, how to give you an yes answer tonight because I didn't have the background. And I, I was, I just couldn't cruise through 75 pages of, of text.
We'll work with, we'll work with Dave to generate that.
Is that okay?
No, absolutely. No, I, I'm glad you put it that way because sometimes we give these presentations, as anyone even listening, you know, if, we definitely want to get the information out, make sure people understand it. So that, those are really good suggestions, and definitely can do that, try to get a nice summary sheet out, and we can kind of, sometime to think about it. Like I say, we were kind of late on this, we should have been here in the fall, but the, and the other thing, again, remember, we have a 2% increase in expenses. The 2% rate increase is just covering that. So it's basically the debt service as it's fallen off is, is that extra we're looking for.
That's your buffer.
Excuse me?
That's a buffer. Your debt service falling off is a buffer.
Right. And for, for, for seven years, we, we held rates steady as our expenses went up. We're saying now, to fund the asset management plan, we were going to use that, that debt's falling off, now put that in the bank.
Yeah.
So we get, we, we're used to those bond payments so that we get to a certain point, we'll have cash to be able to do a lot of our projects cash. That, again, it's a very, I think, conservative plan, and it's a real good business plan, but it's difficult on, on users, obviously, and how the impact is. And that's why you guys need to understand it so before we make the rate. So we're fine with that.
You're okay with that, okay?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted, we, we needed to get the discussion going. And I would also offer, if there's other questions that come up, please get them to us so that we can answer them. And if there's other things that you don't understand within the report or have, you think should be brought up, more than happy to make sure we can do that better in the presentation.
So we're covering, we're covering our expenses, and we're covering our capital projects, and we're saving for our asset management plan. So those three things are what we're doing in this because, when we set the rate at 3%.
You have to. Yeah, you have to, right? Revenues have to cover costs, and then whatever surplus has to cover your capex. And that's, you know, that-
Well, and then there's, then there's savings on that for the asset management plan. So there's the third one on what we're doing here. We're another, before, we weren't ever saving for an asset management plan. That's a different component that we're adding now.
Well, you know, the funny thing was, our fund balance did grow. So when I got here, and we went to the FDA to go get, and we had $2 million at one point. We have now funded many of our capital projects without bonding over the last six or seven years. And we've drawn that down to the, about a million dollars we are now. So one of the things we were supposed to do is set up the capital reserve fund. We haven't done that yet. It was still just there.
We did it with 50,000.
Oh, it was done?
Yeah. It was established, I would say, we did that in the fall, late fall. We did do it with 50,000, and that money was supposed to go over or be allocated for that. And I can go back and find which minutes we did that, but we did.
Okay, then, then I was out of the-
So just that I'm, I'm, I apologize if this sounds stupid. So you, when you say it's used to fund your asset management, really what you're saying is that asset management plan, which, which is another pretty nice piece of work, specifies projects that you need to do, when you need to do them, and given when you put it together, what the rough idea or the cost was within, you know, within a rough order of magnitude. So when you say it's to cover your asset management plan, that surplus is used to fund those projects. I'm just doing this for folks who are out there. It's used to fund those projects. And then there are maybe bigger projects unforeseen that you might have, that you want to have something in the, in the kitty. Like this road out here, it needs to get worked on. You want to have an accrual set up or some kind of a cash store so that you can do some, do some renovations.
They're not unforeseen, though. We, we have inventoried everything we own.
Yeah.
And we have a price and a date for everything we want to replace within the next 100 years. So the unknown would be if a waterline break was-
Yeah, water break.
And that's, that's, that's different. That comes out of operations. We respond to that patch. That might change. Like at the wastewater plant, we thought we were going to do this, but all of a sudden, oh, wait a second, we had a grant to do that, or, or something changed. So that's possible. And that's what's the beauty of these odds. Like I said, you know, the capital reserve funds give you the flexibility because we're saving that. So we can deal with emergencies as well as plan for the future and the stuff you need to repair.
Thank you. Thanks, Keith.
So am I assuming you're going to come back with another one? This one has the, what was in our packet?
That was a 2%.
That was, that's right. That's why I'm-
And the PowerPoint was a 3%.
Are you going to come in? It also was going to do it effective January, this was January 1, 2018, and we didn't have a date or anything. So you will come back with us with this sheet on a new date, or are you asking?
Yeah, Brenda did that. Brenda LaPointe did that. So yes, we, we could update that sheet.
Because we don't, I mean, I'm not, I don't have something, and then you have all the different sizes that all have different rates. We used to get something that was complete, and we knew exactly what we were, and then exactly what date it was going to take effect?
Yeah. So if we come back in February, we're still be okay to make it effective for the April billing.
Right.
So to be effective, the, the March readings for the April 1 billings, and that'll be on that starting of the second quarter.
Right. And the paper can put it in that we're, we're in the process of doing it. But I, how do the other board members? I'd like to see this complete.
Well, we'll have a both, 2% and 3% because you can, you can have either or, right? You, you can, right?
We want it either or, board member?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, my personal preference is one or two pieces of paper should help us out if you can, you know, take this and scrunch it down, okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think you're going to get to sit down. The, the next one is the stormwater system asset management plan. Everybody going to spear it back up for that one?
Yeah, well, I'm going to start first. This is a, kind of the final of, last year at town meeting, we voted to authorize a $30,000 state revolving phone, fund loan, and it was for the town to do a stormwater asset management plan. That was a loan, but it's a loan forgiveness. So technically, it's a $30,000 grant. Tonight, we have with us some representatives from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Katie Zink and Deborah Lozelle, who have been with us, working with us, in the audience in the back, and, and kind of checking up on us, making sure we did what we're supposed to do for the grant. So we not only did a detailed inventory of a big chunk of our system, we also did try to plan for repair replacements and others. So this is just the first step on the stormwater. Our hope is that we're going to continue that this summer and complete the inventory, and then this will work into our CIP and how we fund this. Linda has some good questions, and after the presentation, maybe we can handle those questions about-
That would be good.
What we do. But with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Margaret. And Beth? Okay, so we have some handouts here that I don't think were in your packet.
Oh, good. Well, this was small to read, so thank you for something with a little larger print.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
All right. Thanks, Beth and Dave. Dave did a great job with the introduction, so you know who I am, and you know that DES is here. And he told you about the loan and the principal forgiveness. So let's get started. What is asset management? More than anything, it's an ongoing process. Your staff really has been doing asset management all along, but this project helps formalize what they're doing, collect additional information, and fill in some blanks. It's a systematic way of meeting the needs of the community by delivering a desired level of service. It helps you optimize cost and balance performance and risk. It's a decision-making tool. It helps you decide what assets to repair or replace and when. How many employees do you need? What's an appropriate staffing level? It helps you with budgeting and financial planning. Typical goals of asset management: understanding the condition of the town's infrastructure, identifying and correcting current deficiencies, anticipating future needs, and providing a rational basis to estimate the financial resources that are going to be needed to repair and replace assets as necessary. This project builds on asset management work the town has already done. Underwood has worked on a wastewater collection system asset management plan and a drinking water asset management plan in addition to the other asset management work you all have been doing. The components of asset management include an asset inventory and condition assessment, deciding on a level of service, prioritizing assets, deciding which ones are the most critical, determining minimal, minimal lifecycle costs. What are, you know, routine activities that, you know, you have to do every year, for example, and how much is that going to cost? A long-term funding strategy to help with planning and budgeting, implementation, and communication. All right. $30,000 was a great start, but it's, we couldn't possibly do everything, but we did do quite a bit. We did an inventory and condition assessment of the downtown area catch basins. We had actually planned to do about 400, and we wound up doing over 650. So pretty good progress on that, that front. As the catch basins were being evaluated, we collected information on the size, material, and layout of the stormwater pipes, and we estimated replacement costs and scheduled them out for the life of the assets. The typical life on some of these assets is 75 to 100 years. So they're long-lived assets. We came up with an estimate of man-hours needed for catch basin inspections. Going forward, the town, you know, will want to continue revising and updating the inventory, track man-hours required for various tasks, and automate and refine data collection. Okay, this is a map of the whole town of Wolfboro, and you can see all your assets are kind of concentrated in the downtown area, kind of north Main Street and south Main Street. But you do have a good bit kind of running up north there and to the east. So we concentrated on two work areas for this project. We wound up going beyond that, but this was kind of, these two were the core areas we started out with. This is work area one on North Main Street. And work area two on South Main Street. This is just to give you a little sample of what this thing looks like when you're looking at the computer or at a tablet out in the field. This, I think, is, is the building we're in right now, and there are like eight catch basins in the parking lot and the road. But associated with each of those catch basins is an attribute table with information about the, you know, the size, the condition, when the asset was installed, how old it is, what's its remaining useful life. This is just a, a small sample of the information we collected. This is just a small sample of the information we collected. Some inventory numbers. There are about 1,026 catch basins total, and that's an estimate. That's a number that has to be refined going forward. About over, almost 700 of those are the towns, 674. The state owns 244, and 106 are private. And there were two on one of the school properties. By condition, fortunately, most of the catch basins we evaluated were in excellent condition. We found 11 that would have been in poor or very poor condition, and will need attention in the short term. Stormwater pipe, there's going to have to be an additional data collection effort going forward to verify the quantity and layout. But based on this initial effort, I estimated there's about 62,000 linear feet of stormwater pipe in the town, and approximately 32,000 of that is town-owned, and 21,000 is state-owned. The rest is privately owned. We estimated the age and condition of the pipe based on the material. Vitrified clay would have been installed in the 20s and 30s with a useful life of 80 to 100 years. Corrugated metal, probably, it could have been installed from the 1950s onward with a useful life of maybe 50 years, sometimes less. There's a good bit of plastic pipe out there, PVC or corrugated plastic, installed in the 1980s and through the present, and reinforced concrete. There's a little bit of that, too. And that's a long-lived material, about 100 years. Okay. Stormpipe by ownership and condition. You have a lot of old clay pipe that the DOT installed, and you have a lot of corrugated metal. So just based on the material and the estimated age, we made the assumption that it's probably past its useful life or soon to be. Also included in the stormwater system are your best management practices areas. So this would be something like the Bean Rain Garden. It has some vegetated areas to treat stormwater before it heads into the surface water. I believe that project has some piping and some concrete structures as well. Okay. Level of service. Level of service would include actions that mitigate water quality impacts. I know in Wolfboro, cyanobacteria was an issue this past summer and in early fall. Preventing damage to roads would be important as well, and enabling timely response to customer complaints and concerns. In mitigating water quality impacts, catch basin sumps are the first line of defense, and the best, the BMPs are the second line of defense. The staff cleans the catch basin sumps once a year, and we identified catch basins without sumps so that they can be prioritized for replacement. We assumed one new BMP per year for the level of service, and just continue to implement the computerized incident and reporting and follow-up plan, and replace assets in poor condition in a timely manner. Another component of the asset management plan is assigning criticality and prioritizing projects. And the way we did that was to, was determine the probability of failure based on the condition of the asset or the capacity of the asset, and the impact of failure. And assets that would have a likely effect on surface water or would affect a major roadway were determined to have a higher impact. This is just an illustration of that. Higher probability of failure, higher impact of failure is highest risk. Those assets that are on the low end would be in that blue area, the limited monitoring And this is just kind of a, I zoomed in on the downtown area and just kind of mapped out some of the pipes and catch basins by criticality. That north Main Street area is pretty high on the list. Minimum lifecycle costs, you know, what you do on a routine basis. Annual cleanings are already included in the current operating budget. Throughout this process, we did find some catch basins in poor condition. There were four that were in very poor condition, and seven that were in not the worst shape, but in poor shape. So the estimated cost of replacing those catch basins was $44,000. We estimated another $41,000 for the associated stormpipe for a total of $85,000. Long-term funding strategy. What will it cost to keep up with replacements over the long term? We mapped out estimated replacement costs for each, each year for the next 10 years, and each decade for the next 100 years, because these are long-lived assets. So for the next 10 years, I estimated $825,000. For the next 100, $9.8 million. And there are some caveats and unknowns associated with these numbers. Data collection is ongoing, especially for the stormwater pipe. And there's a capital cost sharing, potential capital cost sharing issue with the state for the state-owned facilities. For the purposes of this report, I assumed that the town would have to contribute 1/3. It might be more. It might be zero. This is a pie chart of that $9.8 million about, you know, most of it is stormwater pipe and catch basins. They're split roughly evenly. And then about $650,000 is for the BMP areas. There we are. I mapped out the estimated cost for the next 100 years, and that big one on the right there, that is the, those are assets that I, we didn't know the age because they weren't evaluated. So that's, you know, that's a big chunk that needs to be figured out, but as you go forward, this chart will be filled in, and that gray line will go away. Implementation and communication. So this is a little flow chart of the process. It all starts with field data collection. Your staff uses Utility Cloud, and they went out with their tablets and went from catch basin to catch basin and filled in information about the condition of each asset. I downloaded that into ArcMap and Excel to come up with the tables and the estimates that I provided in the report. And that can be used for financial planning, work scheduling, and management reporting, which in turn supports staffing, budgeting, and capital planning decisions, and can also be used to educate and communicate with the public and the select board, the decision-makers. Implementation. Recommendations and next steps. Automate incident reporting and customer complaints in Utility Cloud. Your staff uses a paper system for that right now, and they'd like to make the move to a computerized system. Develop a simplified data collection form for annual catch basin cleanings. Streamline data field collection. And on an ongoing basis, refine and update criticality, replacement costs, and level of service. There's communication between management and staff, which would include work orders, what needs to be done, field data collection and training, communication between management and the select board, management reports, staffing plans and budgets, and between the town and the budget, and the public. That would include complaint tracking and follow-up and periodic reports. And that is all. Any questions?
I had, I had someone, but Dave already knows the questions that I had, and it really had to do with explaining to the public, when we do different roads, we have done municipally managed projects in which we pay 2/3, the state pays 2/3, we fund Milton Road, then we own it. We own everything. Then we have Center Street, and that's in a white line to white line, and to what degree do we, and responsibilities do we have for those drainage systems and catch basins? And then my understanding is they're going to come up here and do North Main Street, and they're going to pay for the whole thing.
South Main.
South Main Street, and then we're going to have to do operate and maintain it. So it's, I was trying to get for the public to know that there are these many different ways, and it isn't always 1/3, 2/3.
Nope. No, it's not. It's, and it's changing as we go forward. So those are good examples in, so in Center Street, the project there, all drainage, which was, you know, 50 to 75 years old, was replaced. We had that all upgraded, so that's all new assets. We paid 1/3, the state paid 2/3. On the South Main Street project, which will be from Pickering Corner all the way out to Alton, that's estimated $10 million total construction. Part of that's going to be, a significant part will be drainage. Also, we're trying to implement some BMPs within that project from runoff, because runoff from that road does make its way down to Crescent Lake, and there are erosion problems. We've identified through our 319 grants, and we have plans and proposals and deals with property owners to make that happen. So we will be, and that project, because it's a 10-year plan, as long as the federal government funds the federal transportation bill, which is a big question. So when that gets done in 2023, 2024, we'll be starting that project. They'll be paying 100%. Again, we need to continue to work with them. We had a committee this year, in 2018, we gave our report, so they'll be working on that design, so that's a good one. Going forward, in the area that Margaret showed is South Main and North Main Street. That's where the big part of that. While they own the right-of-way, they own the drainage structures, they say we're responsible for maintenance. So we do clean them out, and as they fail, we fix them. Sometimes they work with us, so we have an unwritten agreement. But clearly, we need to get that one on that 10-year plan or on a municipally managed plan, because that's where a significant amount of our assets are. And the most, one that's most vulnerable is from Mill Street going up towards Forest Road. That's the clay, that's a steep hill, there's a lot of flow there. That's really makes me nervous. So that's one that we really want to start working on now, even though it might be 10 years before we get there.
And so it's 2/3, 1/3 on capital, but upper, maintenance and operations and how they're functioning is all on the town?
That's correct, within the limits they have, which is Old Mill Drive on 28, heading out through Center Street out to 109A. So that's the white line. And then on 109A, it's out to Bay Street, so we have responsibility there. And then on 109, from Pickering Corner out to Forest Road. So those are the areas that we have white line, and that's because we have parking outside, so we're responsible for snow. They just push the snow outside the white line, then we have to move it from there. So we have a lot of fun with them on that.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because we have all these different things that we've done different ways. Does any other board member have any questions? No?
I'll just add to, on the, so we are currently funding, so these repairs that were highlighted in this, in this town, we'll be doing those repairs. We do have money in the O&M budget, not as much, because those are more contractors' numbers. If you had to contract them out, we will be doing those eight basins that are in our work plan, because this year we tend to do more maintenance, because we're backing off on the capital project. So we'll be jumping on those. And our hope is, again, to pick up and continue on that with the Utility Cloud.
So I, actually, I do, okay? So this, again, nice piece of work, and for, for me, I never knew how, how many catch basins we had in the town. That's a lot, especially around Town Hall, which is kind of interesting. It's great that we've taken the time, you've taken the time to kind of document inventory, where they are, characterize them. I mean, if you look at this, there's a bunch of go-dos that come out of this, all those things you've got to go do. One would be, how do you, how do you, how do you really deal with, and I don't expect you'll have an answer, but how do you really deal with the fact that we have a fair chunk of our infrastructure which is well past its useful life? And it may be an emergency where it just collapses, or it does something which it's not supposed to do. There's this communication issue that says we got, we got to do an ever, ever increasingly better job at communicating between and amongst each other and with the public. Those are all like go-dos. And, and what would be fun to see, and I don't say fun like frivolous, would be good to see, is how do we, how do we set, how do we set out a, a set of activities that says, you know what, folks? The good news is, we know what the size of the problem is. We're going to have to start setting some money aside, just like you had in your prior presentation, start dealing with this. Whether it's a third from the state gives us, or who knows? But we got to start, you know, setting up an accrual for, maybe. In terms of the, you know, being a little more technically alive with the way in which we communicate with each other, here's how we're going to do that. That would be, I think that would be incredibly helpful, at least for me, and I'm sure for other people, to see that we're, we're just digging into this, pardon the pun. We're digging into this issue, and we're applying all kinds of the right strategies to keep the costs down and to keep the service up. Because at the end of the day, that, that drainage of bad stuff into our water bodies is not something we want to see ever, ever, ever again.
Right. And I, and I would say something, on the pie chart, I would like to see more BMPs on that pie chart, because what we have is, in our road construction, so a lot of our dollars in our road construction will go towards better catch basins, but we have to continue with these watershed management plans, identifying hotspots, and looking at how we can put stormwater treatment in areas where we may not. We have a lot of hardscape downtown, and we do have the Smith River, which does flush it. But again, the old days of, you know, the solution to pollution is dilution, over. We need to start dealing with it everywhere and every project. So I think it's in our mindset now, it's brought to our attention. The Board of Selectmen has been proactive this year, so we're going to have some big Warren articles, and hopefully have the public support and keep moving forward on this.
I think this, this type of activity takes this program out of what you'd call a hobby. Some people might consider that just going around and fixing the catch basins is like a hobby. This isn't a hobby. This is about keeping the town clean, and it's important. And I think it's important that, you know, we kind of lay out some strategies as to how you can implement some of this stuff. Thank you.
And I think the other thing is that voters have been supporting us in doing that. That's the other piece of it all. And we are lucky that they have, and they were able to communicate that to them, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, Dave. We got the RIB site remediation update.
Really? Yeah, see, that was great. Get all the projects in one time. So we have a administrative order by consent with Department of Environmental Services. They worked with the town once we resolved our issues with our engineer in our long-term study. We've been funding that for the last two years, and then this year, we're also looking for additional funding to complete. This is an interim report that was required by the state, so they can see the action we've taken. It's basically a summary of what's happened over the last year. And the good news is, we were able to get our second major full-scale pilot in, which is our interceptor trenches. If you recall, in 2017, we put in our engineered natural solutions, which is the way we were able to get the water that's breaking out back into the ground, and into the ground up into the brook in a natural way that's acceptable. In 2018, our goal was to, how do we get it out of the hill without the hill breaking down? So what's happening is the water's coming out faster than the natural can take it. So we tried three different alternatives here, all of them which can work long-term. The installation took a little bit longer, and with the weather, it was a little late. We completed it in October, and then, but we were very slow in our filling of the RIBs. We failed that. One of the things we learned is maybe to go much slower than fast, which is something that a trial and error. So as a result, we didn't have a lot of data. Now the water is flowing really well, the system seems to be working fine. We will continue to collect the data, work with the state, and work with our consultants in terms of developing the next phase of this. In 2018, we also were able to negotiate the purchase of five acres of land that were in Houghton Borough. in Tufton Borough. That's necessary, because some of the area that needs to be remediated is in Tufton Borough. We have now installed wells, and we are looking at how we're going to deal with that, same issues on that side of the, of the property. So there's a lot of information there. Intent was not to do a PowerPoint, but it was here to basically kind of give you status and have any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, I found it very interesting, after walking it with you, to try to understand exactly where the different things, the trenches that we looked at, and what you were trying to do in catching it in different places. Right now, these are pilots, you've put a couple in, and you're expecting that to be part of the, the final solution. So these things aren't coming out. You're going to add to them with more.
There is certain carrywaters, so the infiltration trenches are built to be permanent.
Okay.
When they come out of the ground, we're carrying the water from point A to point B. Some of those are still above ground, some of those will be not reused in the long-term plan. They're good for now, and they might be good for a couple of years, but at some point, we, the intent is this all to be underground. So as we restore the wetlands, this will be able to walk through. You won't even know what you're looking at, which would be a sophisticated tertiary treatment facility. And it, and again, that is our goal, long-term goal. We have a wetland specialist who's working with us on the restoration of the wetlands. That's why this year, we are, we're asking for another 500,000. Hopefully, we won't need all that money, because technically, we'll be just continuing on the monitoring, maybe some adjustments, and we're going to start with, again, the mitigation of the wetlands, and then, again, working with the state, consultants, and coming up with those construction plans, so that we'll be ready for construction in 2020 and 2021.
So how many, how many gallons are you putting up there? I know you're building it up slowly. You don't have it all built out, so are you, you're not going to put up the 340 gallons per day?
Yes, we are. We are going to, yes, we, for two reasons.
Okay.
One is, we need to push the system where it's in, to see how it reacts, and we also need to get rid of the water. So we had shut the system off this summer, so we could do the construction. We had to dry everything out, so we shut it off in February. We didn't use the site at all this year, and so the pond got up to a pretty high level. So it's at a level now, highest it's been in, in some time. We still have it, a $20 million buffer on it, and in the springtime, when we still can spray, we're confident we'll draw that all the way back down to where it needs to be by the, the next year. So the answer is, we are going to be no more than 340,000, which is within our permit limits, but we are going to push it to that amount, and we will be getting there within the next month.
So you'll be getting there before putting the whole system together?
Right, so we, we still are going to have breakout and damage in certain areas.
Okay.
That's, that is, that's why I'm nervous, so that's why I have this money, in case we have to react if something gets really bad.
And I think one of the things that should be pointed out to the public is this engineered natural, natural solution, when we, when it first failed, DES was not into allowing us to do that. Isn't that correct? Because you had pipes in, and they, DES.
Well, that, no, they were looking at two separate things, so again, so what, what I did was an emergency plan to mitigate the erosion, and that was not the ENS system.
Okay, but this, and a engineered natural solution, as I recall, when I went down to DES with you, while we were dealing with the lawsuit and stuff, they were not interested in an engineered natural solution. It was really after some of them retired, that we kind of moved into that direction.
Um, I, I, I think we didn't have these, at the time of the lawsuit, we did not have underwood engineers working for us. We had Wright Pierce, who was throwing crazy cheap ideas at us. That's what was being rejected. The, the solution that we've come up was, because we listened to what the state was saying, we responded to that, that it had to go back into the ground. We didn't think it was necessary, so we were fighting not, so we were not doing that. The fact that some people have changed, I, I don't think that had that big an impact. But technically, we listened to them. When we had underwood coming with us, we had wood incoming, we had a team that go down and listen to what their concerns were. This is a direct relation to what they told us that would be acceptable. So I think it is different than what we talked about during the lawsuit.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Any comments?
And if, after, maybe in the springtime when the snow melts, we can have a, a walk out there, so if people are interested. Right now, you'd have to have snowshoes, but I could take them out, it's a little icy out there. But at some point, and we'll have more data, and there'll be a follow-up report in the springtime. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it says the monthly report on the status of funds as of December 31st. This is a report that the Board of Selectmen gets each month from our town treasurer. It tells us the balance in all the different accounts, and it's just in here for an information, and if anybody in the public wants a copy of it and see what we get monthly. Does the board have any question about this report? Nope, okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, the Budget Committee held its public hearing, and we now have an operating budget warrant article with the total amount for the 2019 operating budget, which is $27,893,891, with a default budget of $26,856,570. And my understanding is, we need to vote to accept this. So does any board members have any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to recommend the 2019 budget as presented to us here tonight?
I move that we, that we vote affirmative on the 2019 budget as presented here tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to, Chairman, do we need to actually read the article, or can we just?
No. No, it was all read in a public hearing in front of them, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, a letter received offering assistance to the acting town manager. I have received two letters, and I'll hand you out copies. The first one is from, the first one is from Dave Owen, who has offered his services. If we, oh, needs to go, need any assistant? And the second one is from Luke Freudenberg, who was a selectman, and he has also offered his assistance. So I just thought I, all board members should see these letters and let the public know that they have come in. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, now, let's, I'll move on to retirements, and I'm going to turn this over to the acting town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We have two pending retirements. One was announced last week, and that would be Jeff Ruckhart. The Employee Committee put together a retirement party for these employees. The second one would be Ann Marble. I believe she has 32 years with the town, and I think Jeff is 25 or 28 in that, in that area. So what you have in front of you is a proposal to have a retirement party for them. Normally, employees of this timeframe would get a chair. Both of the employees expressed they really did not want a chair, but they expressed that they could use some gift cards. So that was the plan, we would do gift cards to the balance of what the chairs cost. And this would tie the two parties, or the two events into one, as opposed to having separate events. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Just so the public knows, they, they're looking for $1,205, and my, and I think the acting town manager's suggestion is that we would take it out of the Board of Selectmen's miscellaneous expense fund.
It's also open to the public.
And Dave Bowers, you can say it.
No.
I don't know if it traditionally has been or not.
Oh, okay, no.
I think, this, I think are usually staff. Anybody?
It's fine.
I guess I didn't hear what the question was.
He was saying, was this open to the public, or was it just staff?
No, we keep it to staff, because that way we can control the food.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or concerns? I'll need a motion to expend $1,205 from the Board of Selectmen's miscellaneous account or line item.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Ready?
I'd just like to say that if we're going to, you know, keep it toward the staff, I think we should at least, you know, offer a listener, a listener to come in and take some nice pictures for the, for the paper and stuff, obviously, so.
I am sure she'll show up, I'll give her that.
We will make sure that the press is invited.
That's right, in big letters. Okay, next item on the agenda is a monthly report from department heads, and this is from the acting town manager, and we wanted to have some kind of discussion about what we, the board was really looking for in those reports.
Yeah, so one of the, the points of, of concern going forward is, what exactly is the board looking for in monthly reports from department heads? So what I'd like to get from the select board is, is somebody to be able to work with me and provide some guidance to create exactly what the select board might be looking for, for information, rather than just data. Is any interest?
You want to do it? What?
I want to do it.
Sure.
Can I volunteer?
You may volunteer. We'll be glad to have you do that.
Perfect.
Paul would like to help you.
I'd love to volunteer.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is old business.
Okay.
Anybody have any old business? Any other business? Town managers' report.
Couple of items. The first one is, and this is a little bit late, many may have been made aware that the governor has repealed the energy tax. So as a result, the electric, municipal electric bills, you will no longer be billed a .00055 cents per kilowatt hour, as this energy consumption tax has been repealed. Although the line will still remain on your tax, or your electric bill, it's not going to be a number on it, it'll read zero. Additionally, as many people know, we had a pretty good snowstorm over the past week. Municipal Electric had a couple of issues where they had to go out and make some repairs. They got that handled well, as well. Public Works was out picking snow. They got, I think to this point, all the hydrants got cleaned up, and the streets have been cleaned up. One of the, I, I did receive a, a concern from a business owner regarding the snow machine trail, which went into the dog side parking lot. I received that complaint, or concern, on Friday afternoon, and went down. There was some significant problems with being able to both access the building and be able to egress from the building. As a result, I spoke with David Ford, and it resulted in the trail being taken up from that section. It's my understanding, when the next storm comes through, they're going to reconstruct that portion of the trail. However, it's not going to be as high, it's going to not impact the sidewalk, and the end of the trail going into the dog side parking lot will not have a sweep in it. It'll just end, and hopefully, that will improve the access and egress from the building. And to this point, that's, that's all I have, Madam Chairperson.
Okay. We'll start with committee reports. Start down there with Paul.
Yep, thank you. Board of Selectmen meetings over the past few weeks, been a number of those. I think with tonight's vote, we have put the pencils down on the, on the budget and the warrants. We're, we taped those last night, so watch TV and come out and vote early and vote off on the, on the budgets if you are so inclined. We had a visit yesterday, or two days ago, to talk about the railroad station, and I think the strategy there is to, is to think more deeply about that whole complex. Chairman Murray can fill in the, fill in the blanks on that. Aside from that, I'm looking forward to our upcoming snowstorm this weekend.
Dave Senical?
Yeah, we had a ZBA meeting that was postponed and moved to next month. I spent a couple hours working on the hazardous mitigation plan, and then, of course, we had the TV warrant taping yesterday, as Paul mentioned.
Yeah, we had, last week, we had a planning board meeting. Also, that centered around discussions and stuff about our, the proposed warrant articles that the planning board's going to have on the, the vote for town meeting. Over Community TV, yesterday we had, yesterday morning, we had our annual meeting, went over some things there in the studio, we had that, it was very nice there. And then, of course, we were all back there in the afternoon for our taping of the warrant articles. And last week, we also had a Liberty Museum Building Committee meeting, going over where we're at with the feasibility study, and keep that group, we're going to keep that group fairly busy moving forward here with, trying to keep that on track, so.
Okay, I went to the EDC meeting. The railroad station building did meet, we wanted to look at it. The railroad station and the Bean Park and whatever's going to become of the freight station is kind of an area, and we are going to work with the Heritage Commission to look at that area, hoping that we could have a meeting and two with them, and they will help us look at some of the history there and how we may want to look at that area. I went to a Sinobacteria meeting. We are starting to get a work plan together, and we had Dr. Warren Muir, who has, gave us a lengthy discussion on all the different kinds of Sinobacteria that they are, and what our lake really looks like, and that was very educating. I went to the Chambers Executive Board, and I, last night, I went to their social. I went to a meeting in which we wrapped up the CIB, CIP. We went back, looked at how the process went, looked at the forms, and made suggestions for the coming year, and I joined the rest of my board members yesterday afternoon for the taping of the warrant articles. Dave?
Various meetings, TV, board, library, educational, that thing, and for some reason, I had a great number of requests on Wolfboro history from people that are interested in it, and I've probably fielded five to 10 of those since our last meeting.
I have, I'd like to make an announcement of a couple of dates and reminders. February 5th, 7:00 PM, up here in the Great Hall, will be the deliberative session. That'll give us an opportunity to explain all the warrant articles and to make any changes to them if the public so chooses. Then on March 12th, from 8:00 to 7:00, is the election, up here again in the Great Hall. It's important for people to show up for those two meetings. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is questions from the press? Okay, next is public input.
Good evening, my name is Josephine Amatouche. I told the people that I want Police Officer Dean Rondo terminated, that he should have never been a police chief. Regarding an incident that occurred that he did against me, and here he is again, up to his criminal acts again, so he has to be terminated. He is a threat to the public. I received a notice from the town, and on the bottom of the letter, the town manager stated, "We are aware of an incident at the transfer station where you placed your hands on an employee. Under no circumstances shall you touch any town or Wolfboro employee. This is unacceptable." This is unacceptable conduct. Your future cooperation is anticipated." I had no idea what she was talking about. I was given no names and I've never touched anybody at the transfer station. I got very, very angry because the town had accused me of something I did not do in the past. And here they are accusing, they accused me in the past of causing a disturbance in the town hall, when it was Bob, Rob Hausmann, who was the one who was causing the disturbance, when he assaulted and imprisoned me in the town hall in retaliation because I was accusing Chief Chase of misconduct. So I wrote back to the town manager and I told her I was filing a lawsuit against the town for accusing me of something I never did again. In retaliation, the town officials got Police Chief Dean Rondo to prosecute me by accusing me not of placing my hands on an employee at the dump, but pushing him and making him fall down the stairs. On the day they were talking about, the only thing that happened at the dump was that I was in the office to tell the manager, Mr. Champagne, that someone was throwing their trash all over the ground. Mr. Champagne answered me in the same disrespectful manner that he has been doing for years. I left and returned immediately to tell Mr. Champagne that he was, he has been disrespectful to me for years. This is all that happened that day, without anyone asking me to give my version of events of what happened that day, of course, because this was a setup and they didn't care about my version events. Because Rondo knew this was a setup, he, he, he didn't, he didn't want to prosecute me and he contacted the Belknap Sheriff's Department to prosecute me.
You have one more minute.
I was accused of a simple assault under RSA 631-21B, which states, "You recklessly caused bodily injury to another." However, Robert Maloney, who was the employee who accused me of pushing him down the stairs, had made a statement to the Belknap Sheriff that he did not receive any injury, which mean, and the sheriff, which means there was not a violation of this statute. The sheriff also asked Robert Maloney if he had any relationship with me, and Maloney answered that he only knew me from using the premises over the years. However, I have an active restraining order on his mother, Pauline Maloney. He knows, he knows me well. And then, and, and when, when he worked for the Highway Department, he would push all the snow with his truck in my driveway.
Are you just about done?
I had to call the police.
You just about done?
Okay, listen. You're going to do something with this police officer. You're going to terminate him because now I'm afraid for my life. Do you hear me?
I do. I was asked to read a letter from Claude Rosenger in his absence. I believe he sent it to the town hall as well. Dear madam and gentlemen, you may have seen my letter to the editor of the Granite State News attached. I would ask your attention upon it, please. No part of this matter concerning the town manager's office has been well considered or well executed in the first instance undermining the legal and necessary authority of the office itself, and in the second instant exposing the town to potential liabilities that could well cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Moreover, by veiling the Board of Selectmen's action in a cloud of uncertainty, the board has created an issue that is a moral wrong, the inevitable suggestion that the town manager has been guilty of a misbehavior. That is what has been understood by your having left the clause of your action unspecified. If you believe that the town manager has been guilty of a misbehavior, you had an obligation to us and to hear, have heard clarity and publicly stated it. If, on the other hand, it is a matter of disagreement between yourselves and the town manager, that does not involve misbehavior, you ought, you ought decently to have said so, that the voters might properly assess your action. If the matter comes down to a disagreement, you must consider that your action, you will have undermined the managerial authority specific by law of the town manager's office now and henceforth. What good can possibly come to Wolfboro by this? If it is the Board of Selectmen's position that the town manager should not have the authority accorded by law, that the town manager should not have the ability to manage the town's employees, it suggests that the Board of Selectmen wants to change the town's form of government. That would be a matter for the voters to consider, not the Board of Selectmen. Seen through the uncertainty that the Board of Selectmen has created, therefore, having to proceed on understandings now current in lieu of clear information, it would seem that the only remedy would be, A, to reinstate the town manager now, B, to provide the town manager with a list of corrective actions for her office that you failed, it seems, to provide upon her review early December, when you also granted her a raise, and C, and that you reassess her performance in six months. Legal and rightful decisions made by the town manager must be allowed to stand or you de facto cripple the manager's ability to manage. It is regrettable the Board of Selectmen did not more carefully consider this matter and find a better solution to whatever were your concerns. Sincerely, Claude Rosenger.
I respond to this. Let me, let me make one comment. What?
Whatever you want to do.
Mention the rumor mill.
Do we have anybody else from the public who'd like to give any public comment? Hearing none. I'd like to make, have somebody make a motion to go into non-public session.
So move.
Do I have a second? Paul?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes, yes.
Yes.[1784.91]